Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Wednesday, September 8th, 2021 meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners is now in session. This meeting is being held under the Executive Order on Remote Participation. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open leading law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. That order was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, by accident legislated, the order was extended until April 1st. Paul LaRolle, Commissioner Collins.
President.
Commissioner Stady is on his way and Commissioner Sherg is here cheering the meeting. We have a quorum. I'm going to jump around at the very beginning in the interest. We have a busy agenda here. I'm going to take care of some of the straightforward agenda items. The first thing is I'm going to ask everyone to join me in saluting the flag. Congratulations to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the republic from which we stand, one nation. Thank you. Commissioner Stady is present. Okay. We have a couple of department heads with us today. We're always happy to see them. We have Superintendent John Martin from Norfolk County Agricultural School with us and we have our county's Patrick Kiggins, who's going to be participating today. The mission is the first item before we go into executive session are a meeting with the Division of Capital Assets. You'll find in your packet some notes relative to the 20th anniversary of September 11, 2001. What I'm going to do is open up and read a statement that we're going to make. We're going to ask Commissioner Stady to read the names of 12 residents in Norfolk County who lost their lives that day. And we're going to have a moment of silence and then we'll get right into the regular agenda. All of us can remember with clarity exactly where we were in the morning of September 11, 2001. It is fitting and proper that the county commissioners pause our meeting and acknowledge the 20th anniversary of the September 11 attacks. I offer the following resolution. The attack on the United States on September 11, 2001 resulted in the death of 2,977 innocent people, injured countless others and the disruption of immeasurable lives. The events of September 11, 2001 brought to the forefront the courageous deeds performed by the members of our armed forces, police officers, firefighters, emergency service personnel and average citizens who were called upon to serve to protect their fellow countrymen. The Norfolk County Commissioners remember the 2,977 souls lost that day and mourn in a particular way the 12 residents of our county whose lives were lost in the act of needless and senseless hatred. I'm going to ask Commissioner Stady to state their names for all to hear. Alphabetical on there, Commissioner.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I read the following names of the people who lost their lives on that tragic day. Christine Bobbuto, age 32, of Brookline. Kellyanne Booms, age 24, of Brookline. John Brett Cahill, age 56, of Wellesley. Nellie Ann Hefferman Casey, age 32, of Wellesley. Carlton D. V. Fife, age 31, of Brookline. Edmund Glazer, age 41, of Wellesley. Lisa Reinhardt, then Fodenstein, age 41, of Needham. Daniel C. Lewin, age 31, of Brookline. Deborah Medwig, age 46, of Dedham. Sonia Morales Wapolo, age 61, of Dover. Patrick J. Quigley VI, age 40, of Wellesley. David E. Retchick, age 33, of Needham. Mr. Chairman, with your permission and only with your permission, there is one name missing from Canton. I knew this personally. I can't tell you his age, but I'd like to add, and he died on this day as well.
Sure.
It was Michael Yuliano of Canton, well-known family, very active in the Canton Town Club. And Michael was now standing quarterback for our team, lived in New York and was eventually was in that building on that day and lost his life. I'm sure there was no oversight intended, but I don't know his age. I know he died at a young age.
We're going to have to get it and we're going to have to spell his last name for us.
Yeah, U, U L, I, A N O, well-known name in Canton. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We're going to pause for one moment, please. This commission honors the valor of those who were lost, those who innocently went to work on that day and the brave souls who went in after them. May we also be ever mindful of these who grieve for them and carry their memory in their hearts. While 20 years of our lives have passed, those lost have denied a score of summers, countless holidays and a freedom to live out their lives in liberty and safety. We recommit ourselves this day to the preservation of their memory and the solemn observance of this infamous anniversary. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go to our meeting of capital asset before.
Yes.
Executive sessions.
Yes.
Okay. Number four. Meeting scheduled with the Division of Capital Assets Management and Maintenance for discussion relative to Quincy District Court. I'm going to open this up and have Director Cronin give a brief one-minute overview and we'll go right to the folks from Division of Capital Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, joining us today are, as you mentioned, members of the Department of Capital Asset Management. I also see members of the trial court present. Back in June, the Department of Capital Asset Management, Ms. Heidi Green, extended to us a draft request for response for an environmental site assessment of the Quincy District Court. At this time, the Department of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance is looking to get your permission to sign off on a contract which would allow them to perform this service over the next several weeks. Later in this meeting, we'll be going into executive session with counsel to talk about a number of different items, including this, and upon which you may take the vote if you so choose to agree to this particular request. I know Heidi has some colleagues with her this afternoon that will complement the presentation and revealing the information of what they choose to do in Quincy. So at this point, for you, Mr. Chairman, I'll recognize Heidi and our team and ask if they. Yep, if they could introduce themselves and just let us know when you want to share a screen also, Heidi, as you asked. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Heidi Green. I'm a senior project manager with the real estate division at D-CAM. And Paul, do you want to introduce yourself?
Keep muted.
You're still muted, Paul.
There we go.
Good. Paul Crowley, Deputy Commissioner of Real Estate and Leasing. Thank you, Heidi.
Thanks. Steve, do you want to go next?
You are Stephen Andrews, Deputy Director of the Office of Real Estate Management, D-CAM.
Martha, would you like to go next?
Martha McMahon, Deputy General Counsel at D-CAM.
Is John Prandente on this call? I haven't seen him yet.
John Prandente, Deputy Chief of Staff at D-CAM.
And then Emily?
Sure, and we've got Lisa on as well. Good afternoon, I'm Emily Glavy. I'm an architect and the project manager leading the Quincy project.
Thank you. I just want to introduce at the outset of the meeting, introduce Patrick Kiggins, our county engineer. And I also want to introduce Attorney Scott Lopez, who was a counsel to the Norfolk County Commissioners and will be handling a lot of the casework on this case, hopefully.
Okay. I just want to mention Lisa Dixon, our Chief of Staff, is on the call as well.
Okay.
And we have, we have a couple of folks from the trial court. You probably know them, but just in case you don't, John, if you want to introduce yourself and we'll kind of go through your group.
Sure. John Bayo, Court Administrator for the trial court. Matt?
I am Matt Coachardi. I am the new associate court administrator for the trial court.
Georgia?
Hi, Georgia Kurtzly, Senior Counsel for Governmental Affairs for the trial court.
Chuck?
Thank you, John. Chuck O'Brien, Director of Facilities and Capital Planning. Thank you.
Dave?
I'm David Cole. I'm the Deputy Director of Capital Projects.
And Jim?
Tim Harding with the trial court's capital planning department.
Thank you.
Thanks. So Heidi, I don't know if you want to, do we want to bring up the presentation?
All right, would you like to start that? That would be great.
Sure, am I going to be able to share? Let me see.
You should, yes, we made you a call.
Okay. Yep, I can do that. So I'll, I'll share. I've got a couple of slides Heidi and I will speak to. These are really in response to the questions you all sent along a couple of weeks ago. Of course, this is a, you know, a 10,000-foot overview, so we are happy to answer any questions you have at the end. I will also encourage the group on the line that works very closely with me on this to chime in if I miss anything. All right, you guys should be able to see my screen.
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right. I think everyone is familiar with the, with the site, but we've got an outline of it up on the screen. This is the existing parcel for the Quincy District and Juvenile Court.
We're not getting that, Emily.
Oh.
We're not seeing anything. We're seeing your faces, but not anything else.
We'll get the packet, okay, so just follow the packet.
Is it, is it this person?
It's the same.
Patient that you sent? Okay.
It's the same, but I will.
We'll follow it.
I will try again, see if this helps.
Just want to let you know, that's all.
Okay. Can you see that?
It's likely on our end.
Yeah.
You may, you may, in this era of Zoom meetings, you may be set up as a different format that doesn't allow you to see my screen.
Yeah.
But if you've got the printout, it's the same eight slides that I'll talk through and I'll try my best to narrate when I'm switching. So I'll switch to this.
I'm being told that some people in the office are seeing it. It's just on this screen, so I think you can proceed. You have the handle.
Okay, great. I'm on the second slide. So one of the questions you all answered was, you all asked, and I'm going to try to answer with a quick timeline is really what we've been up to to date. I won't go through every single item, but generally we kicked off the study for a future regional justice center in Norfolk County. And on the next two slides, I'll kind of get into why this is really our top priority project. So we kicked that off in the summer, fall of 2019. We began some programming for the court and we also conducted a full site analysis to understand what the needs of the trial court are. And I should say that, you know, D-CAM and the trial court really work, we work very closely on all capital projects, including this one. So it's really saying we, and I mean D-CAM, but also the folks from the court, undertook an analysis to understand what the needs are and what the potential best location is for Norfolk County. Spring of 2020, which we all remember because that was the start of the pandemic, we also got to a point where we determined that Quincy really is the best location at this point in Norfolk County for a regional justice center for a whole host of reasons. At the start of the pandemic, so spring 2020-ish, most of our projects at D-CAM had a pause because many of the, many of the operations shifted, including the operations of the trial court. If anyone has kind of been following things, you'll see that a lot of processes, you know, you can now do virtually. Of course, there are some things that just have to be done in person, but the project, in addition to most of our other projects, had a pause in the summer and fall of 2020 to sort of recalibrate, you know, what this new virtual access means. And we picked up again winter of 2020 and 2021. And here we are, we've created a set of design guidelines that will guide this project and all others moving forward to incorporate some of the virtual aspects. So that's, that's the project timeline. What you see beneath that in the little kind of green arrows is the different points that we, points of contact that we've had with Norfolk County along the way. Beginning in July 2019, you all have been very accommodating, you know, when we visited the courthouse, et cetera. And we've had a couple, I think we've met, you guys have had a couple of different county directors, which we have met over the last year or so. That is really a summary of where we've been and how we got to this point. I'm going to flip to the next slide. And I'll, I'll just keep going. We've only got a couple of slides here and then we can take questions. Otherwise, feel free to interrupt me. Where we, where we're going moving forward is recalibrating, reprogramming the needs of the trial court for the, the regional justice center. We've begun doing that by working on the design guidelines and will continue to do so through the winter. And then really we have a, we have an internal process where we get through what's called the certified study and schematic design, which is certified. There's a whole kind of legal process to do that. Before we go into design, so I'm now looking at the three months, I kind of skipped the site for a section, for a second. Three months for preliminary design concepts, five months for certified study, 15 months to design and bid a project of this size. And then it usually takes us about three years to get to substantial completion in terms of construction. So the largest unknown duration is the site acquisition, which of course we're here to talk to you about kind of taking the first step today. But really the, the point of the last two slides is we have done some work to get to this point. We did have a pause in the middle of the project. But we also have a lot of time left to go and, you know, a lot of opportunities to kind of answer any questions and, and figure things out. The site acquisition, you know, depending on the project, you know, can take a couple of months to a couple of years. It's kind of hard to pin that down. So why Norfolk Regional Justice Center? I know this was, I think, your top question for us that the director put together. So a couple of things, and I will tee it up to John and folks at the court if they want to add anything here. A couple of things. The regional justice center approach is great for the court. It's consistent with the strategic plan initiatives. It results in an efficient court system. And what it does is it consolidates multiple departments into one location. And we've got a couple of these that have been completed around the state over the years, including Greenfield and Lowell, Plymouth, I'm sure some of you, you're not too far away from there. Some of you may know about that one. All of this came out of the Court's Capital Master Plan in 2017, which I'm fairly certain you all, it's a public document you all have had a chance to look at. But what that document did and incorporated was a weighted analysis of building conditions for all 100 courthouses, including life safety, if it's historic, if it has separate circulation, et cetera. And the district court really rose to the top in terms of needing the most repair and having the greatest need combined with being one of the busiest courthouses in the Commonwealth. John, I don't know if you want to add anything. I think Quincy is like the second or third busiest in the Commonwealth, but it's really a, a building beyond its useful life that accommodates a lot of folks.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, one could just walk by the courthouse on any given day and see the line. And this is before the pandemic of people waiting to get in. And the overcrowded conditions, the fact that we don't have separate circulation, secure circulation. And also we are not in line with the federal law of sound and separation that we must maintain within the courthouses. So I think that all those factors weighed in when the master plan was being developed, which made Quincy a priority and still remains a priority. And again, it's an access to justice issue that we need to address. And, you know, the quicker we could get to it, the better.
Thanks, John. The other, the second to last bullet I've got on the fourth slide mentions the long-term plan for Dedham Superior Court. And I know that, that was another question on your list. And there is a master plan, you know, kind of plan in place for that, for the future use of the courts. We are taking a closer look at how realistic that is and what that might look like. You're just getting that started now and through the fall. So committed to certainly taking a closer look at what can be done in the future for that facility. I know we identified a potential idea of moving some probate and family business to that building. We definitely understand the civic impact of having folks in that building and what it has on downtown Dedham. Just a note at the bottom that this is a 2017 master plan. We're now in 2021 and we've had a lot of things happen, including a pandemic. So, you know, the plan is in need of revision to accommodate those. This is, this really builds on what Court Administrator Bayo just mentioned, that despite the pandemic, despite the five years that have passed, Quincy District Court really remains a top priority for providing, designing and providing a new courthouse, a new regional justice center. It's an opportunity to consolidate. We have a budget range of a massive investment for the future courthouse, 130 to 150 million dollars. I won't go too much, I kind of walked you guys through the project study is underway. We started a couple of years ago. And one thing that we did accomplish prior to the onset of the pandemic is that downtown Quincy is really, that, that location is a top priority for the facility. And how we got to that point, it's got a lot of words on this slide, I know. So I won't read every single one, but one of, one of your questions was how we arrived at this site, downtown anyway, being a top priority. There are several policy documents, both from the trial court, including the master plan that I just mentioned, the strategic plan, as well as a set of design guidelines from a few years ago and current design guidelines that really focus on having great access to transit to best provide access to justice to those folks that, that need the services of the courthouse. A civic presence consistent with the character of a modern courthouse is really critical. Fair and equal access. There's some, in the design guidelines, there's some specifics about access to underground utilities, et cetera. And then there are additional Commonwealth policies and goals. There's a clean energy and climate plan, which wants to eliminate, you know, vehicle trips. All of these, you know, in conducting our site assessment to get to downtown Quincy, we're really weighted and considered. One last piece, we did also complete a mobility study to understand where the court users are coming from. And the court users for both Dedham Superior Court and Quincy District and Juvenile Court, and it really further reinforces the desire to have this facility downtown. That is the 10,000-foot view of the project to date. I'm going to turn it over to Heidi. Heidi will talk through the, the real estate process. So there's kind of a simultaneous planning and design process that happens at the same time as the real estate piece, and she can walk you through that.
Thank you, Emily. For the people that can't see the screen, we're on the last slide, which is slide number eight, which goes through D-CAM's acquisition process. So as mentioned in the outset, we had approached Mr. Cronin and Attorney Lopez. We would like to do an environmental assessment of the property. And as part of our due diligence, we would also do the appraisal, the survey and the title. And we are able to do all of those sort of simultaneously. So for the environmental site assessment, that would consist basically of a desktop records review of federal and state records regarding the environmental condition of the property. You would also do a local review. We would retain a consultant that would do this and they go through the assessors' records, the Department of Public Works, the Health Department, to see if there's been any issues in the past. And also it would entail a site visit where they would look inside the courthouse and also on the grounds just to investigate the property as part of our due diligence period. When we do acquire property, we're governed by Mass. General Law, Chapter 7C. And these steps in the middle section, they kind of have to be done sequentially. So we would have a non-binding letter of intent. There's a couple of ways that the state can acquire property. And the mechanism that we would use would be a uniqueness determination. So we have to post that uniqueness determination in the central register for 45 days. It needs to include purchase price, but the commissioner cannot sign a purchase and sale agreement until this has been posted for 45 days. So that's why it's non-binding. Once that has been posted, we are able to enter into a purchase and sale agreement. And then we have 100-day, 120-day notification letter. And this basically informs the public officials, including the mayor, the city council, if there's a regional planning agency and the legislative delegation. And this notice basically says what the present use of the property, the reason for the proposed action and what the proposed use would be. If the public officials are in agreement, we can reduce that 120 days down to 60 days. And the last requirement of General Law, Chapter 7C, is that we would conduct a public hearing. And that would, we could also reach out to the public and let them know that, that we would be acquiring this property and what the future plans would be. And then once all of that is complete, then we could enter into the closing. So that is our acquisition process. That concludes our presentation and we welcome any questions that everyone has.
And I'm, I'm happy to bring up any slides. That was a quick overview, so happy to bring up anything and talk about it more closely if needed.
Hey. Thank you. I'm going to hold it up to the commissioners first, in our legal counsel, Scott Lopez and county director, if they have any comments now. Commissioner Stady.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, so your site is the existing site of the Quincy District Court, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's been identified as the priority site at this point.
So what happens during the construction phase for the cases and the, you know, what's, what's going to happen over the next, let's face it, two, three, could run into problem four years? What do we do in terms of dealing with those issues? Is there a plan? Are they going to be shifted to different courts?
That's a great, a great question that we get each time we undertake a project of this size. We go through and have begun that effort with the court. Obviously, we don't own the site, so there's no real timeline at this point, but have begun the effort to come up with a plan for what happens in the interim. Generally, it involves a relocation lease site in an area as transit accessible, you know, that kind of meets the, the criteria that I described in a, a priority site. So working at relocation into a lease space as well as accommodating. as well as accommodating, um, some of the services at other nearby courthouses.
It's a combination.
Yep.
Okay.
Commissioner Collins.
Add a quick question. So, um, you want to move Dedham Superior Court to Quincy?
The superior, the, if you look at the master plan, the plan is to move the Superior Court into a regional justice center in Quincy. That also includes the district court, the juvenile court and the housing court. So the question of what happens to the Superior Court after that, we had a, in the 2017 plan had the idea of potentially moving some other court business into that facility. And that's something that we're taking a closer look at this fall, uh, what the needs of that facility are, what the needs of the court are, if that's something that's possible.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it might be out of water, but if it is, there's just, it's kind of, the timing is weird. I believe the chief trial justice have issued a directive that had to do with juvenile courts all to be located in the county in one area in Dedham. Am I correct on that, that this was issued? Um, and so he was going to take all of the juvenile courts, relocate their business to Dedham. Uh, we did get some dialogue, and I'm sure we'll talk about it later, from some Brookline reps who are a little upset about that. And they feel like they're, uh, they're being disadvantaged geographically and other reasons as well. But what impact would that have on your plan, that action by the justice to do that? If any, is there any impact on it?
I'm not sure. I don't know if the court wants to chime in. I'm not sure there'd be any impact on this facility.
It will not have any impact on the facility.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, um, John, any questions?
Yeah, I'll defer to you first, if you have any.
No, go ahead.
Um, Emily, uh, and Heidi, thanks so much for the presentation. I just had a couple of clarifying questions on the acquisition timing and the process. If I understand this correctly, uh, the commissioners approved the assessment today. That will take approximately eight to 10 weeks to complete. Is that correct?
Right. We have to, uh, our environmental folks have to reach out to competitively get a consultant. And then we do a notice to proceed and then they would undergo their, um, environmental assessment, yes.
So following that, it looks like you take about another one to four months for the survey and the title process to begin before site acquisition. Excuse me, site acquisition gets underway through 7C. Is that correct?
Right. So we could do that simultaneously, um, while they're doing the environmental assessment. Martha McMahon, who is our, our lawyer on this case, she would, uh, get her consultant to look at the title. And then I, on the same track, can also initiate the survey. So that can, um, be more done simultaneously rather than those other steps that are enumerated in, uh, the 7C section.
Broadly, very broadly speaking, and I won't hold you to it. So according to what we're talking about, it looks like about five months from now, um, the D-CAM will have completed its due diligence, its site assessment and be prepared then for the site acquisition process. Is that broadly fair enough, about five to six months?
Broadly, you know, it's, um, things come up that we might have to do some, um, more due diligence on. But, uh, that's an accurate estimate.
Uh, regarding the, um, the, the site acquisition phase. And, and forgive me for asking this question, it may be a legal question, but is the county obligated to sell to the Commonwealth? Or does the county have the option to examine other buyers for the property?
I'm going to defer to Martha. I believe the Commonwealth has a first right of refusal, but I'm going to defer to Martha for that answer.
Right. There is a provision that, um, says that if you, if the county wants, if a county wants to sell property, it first offers it to the Commonwealth. Which does, you know, put the Commonwealth in the first position. Um, when it, if the, if the county is interested in selling the, the property. You know, the court statute also does say that there's supposed to be a district court in Quincy. So in terms of, if, if this is no longer a court, then another site would have to be found and developed.
And that just leads to my last question, which is really the timing, Heidi. If the site acquisition process starts, say, July 1st, 2022, um, or it's completed by then, I should say, does, can the court continue to be a court? Or do you expect to have the occupants relocated by then?
I'm going to defer to Emily for that.
We, we generally don't, um, vacate until we own a site for obvious reasons. If, you know, if the timelines match up and it's five to six months and, and, um, you know, it looks like this site is going to work out. Of course, we would have, um, I mean, well, we've already begun the process of, of looking at relocation options and we would have that more firmed up. I guess I'm, I'm not sure if you have a specific, are you wondering if anyone will be there? It, will it be empty for a period of time? Is that kind of what you're, you're getting at with your question?
Just trying to get the timing. So the site acquisition and the vacancy, would they be on paper to be the same day? In other words?
Uh, probably not, but not too far apart.
Fair enough. Okay. So we're expecting something along the lines of FY 23 to be the most likely timeframe for the transition of the property, if all goes well.
FY, FY 23, yeah, not calendar 23.
Yes, one more question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stady.
If I may, just one more follow-up to Director Cronin. So then during the time when the, uh, present courthouse is vacated and you are leasing or relocating services in other courts, uh, would it be the county commissioner's jurisdiction in terms of maintaining whatever space is being leased? Or is that going to be done by D-CAM? You want to speak on that?
That is a good question. Um.
Yeah. So something we could think about, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we're, that's our jurisdiction. You know, we maintain the courts. You have, you're taking down the court. You're going to shift the services. I understand that. I saw John nodding his head, but you're going to also, we have to release a space, I'm sure. That leave space, will that be maintained by us or by you? Or something, we should, something to think about. That's all. Maybe councils can work it out, but I wanted to raise it today.
Maybe Scott has a comment on that.
Yeah, just, you know, something to think about. Thank you.
Scott, do you have any comments right now?
I do, I do have a few questions. Um, I, I just want to be, I, I guess I, I want some clarity on the Superior Court issue. Is it true that the current plan is to move the Superior Court to Quincy?
Yes.
And that's, that's not going to change?
That's, that's been in the master plan the whole time. The, the concept of a regional justice center involves multiple departments at one site. There's, it's kind of the, not kind of, it is the best practice of designing new courthouses because it allows collegiality and, um, more efficiency and ease of access to justice for constituents, right? They can go in and get the department they need. Um, that said, I understand that would result in an empty Dedham Superior Court. And I mentioned, we're looking at, um, what we might be able to do with that building um, in terms of other needs of the trial court. We're looking at that this fall. Um, so that's simultaneous to this acquisition process.
And that leads to my, my next question, which is, you're looking at other options for this, with the, for the current Superior Court.
Yeah.
And, and at this point, it's uncertain about what it is, might, that building might be used for.
Yeah.
Is, is it possible that the trial court will not use that building at all?
I can't ans, I can't answer that question yet. I can tell you the plan is to have the probate and family court, the master plan called that out, go into that space. But without looking at that building more closely to understand what the capital needs are, what it's going to cost to be able to make that happen. I mean, I will tell you, we want to make it work. But really need to do, to get you a real answer on that, need to do the real work to understand what it will cost and what the needs of the court.
Yeah, I just want the commissioners to know that as they make this decision to move forward or not. Um, and with respect to that, if there are capital needs at the Superior Court in order to make it, uh, suitable for the probate court, those, those capital costs would be, uh, incurred by D-CAM in the state?
That's another good question. Um, we've gone, I don't know if anyone else wants to chime in on this. I know we've kind of gone both ways and it also depends on how much it is. We generally do not make a very large investment. Not saying that's what's needed there, but we generally don't make a very large investment in something we don't own. That said, we have, um, definitely transferred money to counties in the past to make investments.
Well, that, that leads to my next question, which is if the determination is made that it's going to be used as a probate court and there are updates to be made, would part of the plan be to also purchase that building from the county in order to build a probate court or do whatever upgrades are necessary?
I don't have an answer to that. It's too many ifs and whats and what, what it's going to cost. I don't know if anyone else wants to chime in on that.
I think the first step would be to take a look at it and get an understanding of what those costs and needs are going to be. And then kind of some of those other questions would be sort of better answered after we get that information, I think.
You know, we're happy to, to not, you know, not do this in isolation, but, you know, share the information with the county. So we're kind of all, um, you know, all dealing with the same set of facts and, and needs for that building.
And with respect to the relocation of the Quincy services, the Quincy courthouse, any rent that would be paid for the relocation would be incurred by D-CAM, correct?
Any rent?
Or by the trial court, by, by the trial court, I should.
That's typically, yeah, typically it's, um, yes, typically that's how it is.
And my last question is, I noticed that the appraisal process is in process on, on your slides. Can you tell us what that appraisal process consists of? With the idea of, is that, is it more than one appraiser? Is it a, uh, three appraisers? Does the county have any input in selecting the appraiser? Uh, how, how, how does that all work?
Uh, it would be one appraiser, um, that we retain that is, is looking into that. It's not three appraisers, just one.
And is that something that was put out to bid to get the appraiser?
Um, we, we have, uh, what we call a massive services agreement where we have, um, various real estate consultants and like surveyors and appraisers, and it's one of the contracts that we hold.
And it does, does that appraisal determine the highest and best use?
I believe that is the, um, way that we're going to appraise it.
And so I just, so then when the appraisal is done, can we anticipate that it will be an appraisal valuing the property if it wasn't used as a courthouse, but say some other commercial building or, or condominium or other, that's a prime location in.
Right, but it's going from, I take that back. I, I think I'm going to have to follow up with you on that question because it's going from a courthouse to a courthouse. So it's not like the Commonwealth is going to acquire it and make luxury condos out of it. It's, um, municipal use to municipal use. So, um, let me follow up on, um,
But I raise that because if the county decided to sell it to, to a developer and we appraised it based on that, we then offer it to the Commonwealth. The Commonwealth may decide they don't want to spend that much money to acquire the site. And in addition, put in the capital cost of building a new courthouse. But if we don't know what that value is, then I don't know that we're getting the highest and best use. So it's just something we need to think about.
Okay, I can follow up with you.
That, that, that's all I have. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment, a question?
No, I think we're, uh, due to go into executive session to discuss this this afternoon and perhaps take a vote and we can serve that our friends are, uh, from D-CAM and the trial court know how it goes after that.
Okay, and did, um, did Heidi, was Heidi aware of that? Did we tell?
Yep.
Okay. Um, okay, last call. And we began, we are going to go into executive session today about this. Um, and there is a chance that a vote would be taken or not.
That's correct.
And we would get back to Heidi.
That's correct.
Work with Heidi.
That's correct.
Any other questions? I, I have to say, and I'm being somewhat quiet, uh, having had some experience in the last few years with this, pre, prior to being chairman, uh, I applaud everyone for getting in one room. I know we can talk about COVID, we can talk about changes in county director, we can talk about a lot of things. But to get everyone in one room is a step in the right direction. I know recently we had a similar meeting on the, on the other side of the house. On conditions in Quincy Court. We, 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 we are caught as landlords in the middle here because there are people who would say, we need new, new HVAC, we need a new roof, we need this. And perhaps we do. But if we're going to make changes in the next four or five years or less, compared as we are, you know, we don't want us to throw good money after bad. So there's all sorts of outside influences. I think I understand it. I think my fellow commissioners understand it. But I think we're going in the right direction. Again, I think today is a giant step forward in a bellwether day because, uh, we're going to be, uh, paying particular attention to this until it's accomplished, one way or the other. Okay.
Like to thank you for the invitation. Um, we appreciate you letting us, uh, do our presentation. And we're happy, once you meet, if you have any additional questions, um,
Sure, there will be.
Can reach out to us.
Yeah, I also want to, uh, thank, um, the commissioners for allowing us the opportunity to participate as well. So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you. This concludes for today the matter on the acquisition process of Quincy District Court in open session. And pending our executive session, but we, we're going to go into it immediately following. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Take care, everyone.
All right, we're going to have one minute.
Couple of items to do, right?
Right, we might as well do that first though. Does anyone have an objection? Oh, no, it's first anyway.
Yeah, the minutes.
Oh, no. I'm sorry, it's not.
Minutes of open session?
That's after executive session.
Is it? Number five?
No, we're going to do number five. Okay, we're going to do number five before we do the executive session because it's only take one minute. Number five, minutes of the open, it's after you, minutes of the open session meeting of September 1st, 2021 for approval.
I'd move approval of the minutes of the commissioners of, uh, September 1.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Okay, number six. We're going to go into executive session for three items, but we're going to take one at a time. Uh, is it necessary that we, um, break them down or do we list all three under the motion?
I think it's probably do one mo, a motion including all three.
Okay. I agree, but I'm going to be doubly sure.
I'd move, Mr. Chairman, uh, that we move, we go into executive session pursuant to purpose one of Mass General Law 38, 21, A1 to continue consideration of an open meeting law complaint against public offices, namely the members of Norfolk County Commissioners filed with the commission by Marbury Lee for Assistant Register on behalf of Norfolk County or District D since July 1, 2021. Now, in addition, I move that we also go into executive session pursuant to General Law 38, Section 21, A3 discuss strategy respective pending litigation matters, uh, namely the Walpole Preservation Alliance, Inc. versus County of Norfolk at all, a WMPO, Donald versus the Board of County Commissioners. And the third imminent litigation style, style cursage?
Cursage.
I don't know what that means. Cursage at all, uh, versus zoning board of appeal for the town of Walpole. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the county. And I believe there's one more, Mr. Chairman, if I may, do you want to continue now?
Yes.
That's nice to do with Patrick.
Yes.
Uh, next motion would be to also discuss an executive session pursuant to 38, Section 21, A6, to consider the purchase exchange of value of certain real property located at High Street Randolph, Page Street Stoughton, uh, Dennis Ryan Parkway Quincy and Fisher Street Walpole. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the county.
They do declare.
All right, so that's my motion.
On this, do we have a second? Second. Motion to go into executive session for the above mentioned, three reasons, all in favor?
You only got this, yes, three person. You have to, you have to poll each one.
Roll call, vote.
I'm sorry, roll the call vote. Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Stady.
Yes.
Commissioner Shea votes yes. We are going to go into executive session. I may state at this time that we will be returning for regular agenda items after executive session. We're going to have a, we're going to have a two minute recess and come back to item number nine.
Thank you.
I'll have Bill send it to you, Rick.
No, I, John, I saw you.
Are we especially recorded right now, John?
I have a contact.
Okay.
As you are open session.
We're back in open session.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we're back in open session on our Wednesday, September 8th, 2021 meeting of the county commissioners. We're on item number nine. Report and our vote on executive side and executive session matters that were previously discussed. I believe we have three votes that we need to be taken. We might need a little guidance on this.
Chairman, if I could, I'd clarify from this.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Stady?
Yeah, sure.
The first one would be to enable the hiring of attorney Scott Lopez relative to the item under number seven of our agenda on the imminent litigation regarding Cursage zoning board of appeal on Walpole.
Right. So I'd move, Mr. Chairman, that the county commissioners retain attorney Lopez to represent them in the imminent litigation that will be dealing with the Cursage and the zoning board of appeal in town of Walpole.
Second. Any comment?
We're pretty much assured that there'll be an appeal taken, so we should be party to that action to see it through. Makes sense.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. Second one, please.
Mr. Commissioner Stady would recommend the motion to authorize attorney Scott Lopez to represent the commissioners regarding the Fisher Street Walpole item and show on item number eight of today's executive session agenda.
And you can, you can just move that, take.
Okay, I'll move that motion.
Second, any discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Unanimous. Number three, please.
The three will be relative to this point approving the request to move forward the site assessment on the Quincy District Court located at Dennis Ryan Parkway, Massachusetts. This is what the Department of Capital and Management means.
Right, I'd move that motion to move forward on the site assessment of Quincy Court by DCAM, so.
Second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. These are three votes. Which are the result of our executive session. We can move to the next law. Anything else you want, Scott? Thank you very much, Scott. Anything else at all? Last call today.
Yeah, I just want to make clear that you're also authorizing the county to be named as a party in that litigation with respect to the imminent litigation with Cursage.
Yeah, so moved.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye, okay. So I made the motion, second?
Yeah.
All in favor, aye, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Go ahead.
No, just say goodbye.
Thank you, Scott. Number ten, public comment. Do you have anyone notified you that they have public comment?
I have one item for public comment, but other than that, no, I have not.
Go ahead, what is it, please?
Relative to Commissioner State, if you want to take over the Brookline matter, we've been contacted by the state rep relative to a decision by the trial courts to move juvenile services from the Brookline District Court to the Dedham District Court effective this week. But we, we've received correspondence, which I believe each commission has been provided from the legislative delegation, district attorney Mike Morrissey. So the item is before you for some discussion today, but if it's okay with you, we would like to bring it back next week. Put it on the agenda for potential vote and or endorsement of your own letters. So Commissioner State, I know you were involved in this. Just that I had a very brief conversation over the weekend with one of the representatives, particularly such you here as well.
Yes.
And Representative Brookline expressed to me their concern about the closing of the juvenile court and what a disadvantage it's going to be for their residents and for their juveniles. I think the letter by DA Morrissey, it was in our packet, outlined some very solid reasons as well.
It is.
I do concur with it. If you're not prepared, as Director Cronin is saying, maybe it's premature. But I know it would be, I think what I'd like to put forward next week, we draft a letter in support of the legislation and join the Brookline delegation in any effort we can to help that situation and keep the juvenile courts open. If even just for like a nominal amount of time, it seems like DA Morrissey stated it's that stating that it could be done in a minimal amount of time and it would have a maximum result. So I would, I would support that position of DA Morrissey. And I think what the representative was saying was that the more perhaps letters that come from different elected officials, perhaps the more it will count.
Correct. And we want, we want to work with everybody, but we really want to work at the top, too.
Sure.
All we have at this stage before we put on our next week's agenda is the three or four other letters. Whatever we get, we'll supply to you. It's in the packet, but we need, we need to put it on the agenda to take it. Okay.
Commissioner, one more thing.
Go ahead.
Through your request, Commissioner, I did speak with the rep and he may be involved. I mean, he may be interested in appearing before you next week to make his pitch. He was unavailable today in short notice, but. Probably remote, right? Yeah, more than likely, you know, so I'll let him know if you're interested in appearing next week as well.
It was a.
Tommy Vitolo.
Okay, you're great.
Yeah.
Looked up, I had coffee with him on a cold February morning, the last time I saw him. Okay.
All right.
Old business, number 11. I have none, none, okay. Number 12, personnel measures for consideration, one on the treasure, one on the recreation, one at the golf course and one at the agricultural school.
I move the notice of personal change for Wendy Hollow of Foxborough, Mass. As 183 day instructor at the rate stated effective 8:30, 21 until 1:14, 22.
Second. Seconded?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye. I move the change of address for Kilide Mulhern to Milton, Mass. As executive assistant junior accountant, effective 9/121.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And lastly, I'll move the notice of contingent employment of James Galvin of Waymouth, Mass. As seasonal grounds crew for the rate stated effective 9/9/21.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That takes care of the personnel issues for today. Number 13, payroll and expense warrants for.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I move the following. Move to approve the AGI bi-weekly payroll 22-10 subset five in the amount of $334,472.29.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Second, I move the AGI bi-weekly payroll 22-10 subset 5.1 in the amount of $15,319.1.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Third, I move the county weekly payroll 22-10 in the amount of $140,870.16.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
And finally, I'll move the county expense warrant of 9/222 in the amount of $206,375.30. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
It is a vote. Number 14, bid openings, we have none today.
Right.
Number 15 is contractor awards, we have none. Number 16, I'm going to follow Director Cronin for this, is request from Boston Butler for rate relief at The View Restaurant at Walston Recreation Facility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approximately two weeks ago, the operator of the Walston Golf Course, Boston Butler Services requested rate relief against the new monthly rental increase. Commissioners may recall that a new contract was signed on March 3rd, 2021, provided for an increase in rent of $375 per month from $2,125 to $2,500 effective July 1st. Boston Butler is seeking relief for the planned increase for the period of July through December totaling $2,250. My recommendation, my recommendation was to deny this, given the fact that the vendor willingly entered into a contract on March 3rd, 2021 and is now seeking relief from the contract that he endorsed. As far as I could tell, based on rounds played, there seems to be an increase in rounds played and activity of President's golf course at this time. I know that's not a true indicator of business within the restaurant, but I just fall back on the fact that he signed a contract just a few months before he asked for relief and saying, so. This commission requested some time to breathe on the issue and bring it back in September. And so we did. For you again.
Commissioners, any comments on this request from the boys at Boston Butler for a rate increase? De- decrease, actually, decrease.
Been a tough time for the restaurant business. He does a very good job here. And I know I, I respect Director Cronin's position in terms of the fact that we just gave him a relief. I wouldn't be opposed to giving him one more shot and calling it, this is it. You know, I mean, I don't know what else we can really do, but, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to giving him one more brick until the end of the year. Maybe he can turn things around.
You know, it's funny.
Go ahead, Peter.
So I've been at this for a while and we used to get a boatload of money from this lease. It was huge. This is nothing, nothing compared to what we used to get. So I think I'd be disinclined to, to grant further relief. I think we've done quite a bit, but I'll, whatever the board favors, I'm fine with it.
Well. Didn't we give, this is the option year that we're in, correct?
Correct.
And I mean, it was due, due for regaining last year and we decided, we had the ability to pass it over for one more year. And we decided, correct me if I'm wrong. All we had on our plate, we were at that point hunting for a new director and we said, let's go another year and look at it. I, I don't think I want to give any more relief at this, at this time. I do appreciate their service. I think they do a good job. All this will be taken into consideration at the bid time. I mean, the last time we bid it, I heard all good and bad horror stories and they were the only bidder. So we, yeah, fine. And we're only a few months away. I mean, this will start, I assume in the fall, so we'll be ready to hit the ground next March, right? And is that a three year with one option or?
I believe it is.
I mean, we forgave some rent during the virus, right?
He was in arrears $41,768 during the period of February 1st, 2020 to, excuse me, March 2020 to December 31st, 2020. You forgave $30,000 of the $40,000.
Right, okay, that was a point. I, Nancy's with us here, of course. If we're speaking out of turn, Nancy butt in, please. I, I, I'd like to wait and I know all the good things there, though, and I, I I'd like to see when I hope, we're looking to have Dan recall in November.
Okay.
Generally, traditionally, and then we get ready to do everything. We got this construction, we've looking at a new, new streets, a new sidewalks. The signs are finally going up and off in September. And I think we had a, we're going to look at the whole golf course and its totality, particularly the work we haven't done, the playgrounds. And I know that The View is not work and playgrounds, but I think we should wait and deck everything in one fell swoop. And I do believe in longevity. I do believe in repeat. If, if the price is right, but.
What we're doing, postpone the action on this.
Take no action.
Take no action, but yeah, we're going to get to it by November, December, because it's, it doing the spring, Nancy?
Yeah, and traditionally, it has always been a five year contract.
Okay, that's it. Five and one or something like that?
It's been three and two.
Okay.
The last time it was put out, it was done as a two and one. I did have other interests last time, but the three year was returned to other.
So we're going to try to go back to the five and.
Five, yeah.
It's going to be our recommendation. All right, I definitely want to wait then.
Nancy, I brought it up earlier when I was asked for comment, but I remember back when we started, we used to get quite a bit more from, from the list of the golfers. We don't, we don't get nearly what we have.
No. No, I don't know whether it's the facility where we don't have separate, you know what I mean? We don't have a separate function room, so everything's sort of run together. Where you might have golfers dining over here, you're having a function over here. I don't know if that has anything to do with it. Um, we did have, I think not go around, but the last one, I think we had two. And then before that, we might have three. Um, I, I don't, I don't have an answer to that.
Thank you. We need a motion or we just take no action?
You don't have to take any action. You would have needed a vote to provide relief. He's under contract to provide the services that are currently defined.
Okay. Any, anything else about Boston Butler right now?
No, sir.
Okay, take no action. I got a lot here from the family and friends of Rick McLaughlin for the reduced charity rate for their coming up golf tournament. There's a packet, there's a letter in your packet, a picture of the family. It's a pretty straightforward request. We've done it every year for the vast few years.
I'm moving.
Second.
All in favor of charity rate for the Rick McLaughlin Golf, Golf Tournament? Aye.
Aye.
I am aware and I did receive a call and a solicitation today, which will be on next week's agenda. From Nick Spader of Dedham Fire Department, a long time. Friend of ours here at the commissioner's office, we used to see him weekly. And they're, they're requesting for their annual Dedham Fire Department, that's going to be on next week's agenda. But I, I was encouraging to him without taking a vote, but we need to take a vote on that one, too. And the Rick McLaughlin group.
Got Quincy families, Joe?
It's Milton.
Are they Quincy?
Okay. Always Quincy?
Quincy.
I'm sorry. He died at the age of 33. I do remember that. In, in 2011. And again, they've been with us a long time. Very, it's a very good group and it's a repeat. They come back every year.
Sure.
So thank you. And we get a note back out to them, I'm sure. Dana will be looking for us. It's on October 1st. Okay, thank you. Next. Report on COVID protocols.
This, this week, Mr. Chairman, the employee in our office who had tested positive will be returning to work shortly. We've had no recurrences of COVID positive within our system. As mentioned, we'll keep this item on the agenda for the foreseeable future as we enter at a time period where seemingly around us cases are increasing. In event this commission feels the need to change protocols, we can certainly implement them. We have a handbook that is posted on our voting board here in common area for people to understand. So at this point, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Any questions about COVID-19 protocol? Number 19, report on the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Couple of very quick items. We are meeting tomorrow for the tri-county, next tri-county meeting. Presumably getting an update from Plymouth County on their progress, but I will tell you over the last week, I've been working with Bellamy Ham on a follow-up on a lot of questions that they asked for support of their plans for American Rescue Plan Act funding. I noticed today, I turned them over to Clifton Larson to help them vet some of the, I believe there were 12 different items. They were looking for feedback on whether or not they were eligible under the grant. I was very impressed with Clifton Larson's response. They were thorough, concise, and I think responsive to Bellamy Ham's interest. So good for a start for CLA, reaching one of our clients. But I'm expecting some timelines associated with the go-live date after we meet with Plymouth Bristol tomorrow. Incidentally, I understand Barnstable will be, Barnstable will be joining us tomorrow.
That's great.
Okay, well, that's, that's interesting.
It'll be fun.
Number 20, report of the gun jerk.
A few items for your attention. I sent out a notice to the department heads to submit by this Friday their requests for supplemental needs and or transfers. This board will be meeting next Wednesday. It is my hope to have before you the need to endorse these transfer requests because they'll then need to be turned over to the Norfolk Finance Committee on the 60th, the week from tomorrow. So the sequence will be, we'll have it all lined up for your review and hopefully approval in a week in the finance committee the next day. This past week, I was on a call with Hilltop Securities. They oversee our bonds and our notes. We've run into a bit of a problem because our audit is not yet done. They had hoped to have it completed by the end of September in order to put the next round of the school's notes out to bond. We will not meet that deadline. During the conference call, we had a long discussion about the strategies behind this bond and this borrowing. Joining me on the call was Assistant Treasurer Joe Doria. We are now targeting late January to put the note out associated with that particular project. We're hoping also to schedule a conference call and or meeting with the school trustees and school leadership, as well as obviously the commissioners to discuss school solvency and its ability to meet the obligations of the debt payments. There's some concerns that the schools have a debt model in place that may not have requisite resources in the front of it, i.e. revenue, and Hilltop would like to have a conversation about what that plan is looking like. And very briefly, I'm currently, as I put together the stabilization, excuse me, the supplemental request. I'm looking to move some of our surplus from FY21 into certain buckets, and one of them is our stabilization fund and possibly some funds for the school debt relief into a either a capital fund or a stabilization fund in anticipation of the school's plan to deal with that financial issue. So you'll see those details reflected in next week's plan, but it's coming into focus quite nicely right now. Speaking of our audit, our auditor, Lynch Marini, expects to have it completed somewhere in mid to late October.
Can I ask a question there, please? Correct me. Why, why, why are we not gonna make it? Why are they not gonna make it? Did we hold it up? Did they hold it up?
It was us. It was really the transition between directors. The, the prior director sent out a notice before he left in February of the need to provide certain documentation and information to the auditor. But between the time he left and I arrived, it was a vacant space and
Okay, all right.
Just wasn't getting any information.
Oh, yeah, yes.
That's, yeah.
Okay.
The rates change between now and then, it has a bigger
That's correct.
Not that I know of the rates gonna change.
Things looking pretty good in the bond market right now, if you're, you know.
I'm not
Getting money.
All right, I don't want to ask another question.
Just for your information, I spoke with Carl Minor this morning. They're tentatively looking at the installation of the post and panel the week of September 20th and the granite sign the week of September 27th. As you probably know, commissioners, they were looking to update and refurbish the signs for the golf course. So September 20th and 27th are the projected dates for the installation. And then finally, just a reminder, two reminders, the Abrahams group will be in two weeks from today, so they're Phase 2. And I believe next week, Commissioner Stady, you're scheduled to be remote. And Commissioner Shave may have some medical appointments.
I, I I mean, you'll have to, if anything goes wrong, they have the ability to add William Buckley's gonna be sworn in.
Correct.
Or, by the way, the law says, and I looked at it recently, as I was stumbling around, looking for something else. There must be a resident in Norfolk County, but it's pretty convenient in this case because Bill is, and he's here. We used to use Director Hagerty. Unfortunately, Mr. Director, because you live in the great county, non-county of Middlesex, you're not being acting commission, however. We've got it covered. I hope not to use it. I think we've only used it once in the last
If he needs to stamp anything next week, get my approval.
Right, and to that end, I intend to give you all a revised September calendar with some updating.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, we're winding down. I, I under number 21. Emergency items did not anticipate. By way, we have a school board meeting tonight, this evening. We have Director Martin here, Superintendent Martin, and, and our business manager. Mr. Fitzpatrick, if we have a quick question or two for them, if we do, do you have anything you need of us today that we missed? Okay, we're all set then, I think. Commissioners, anything else?
Looking forward to the next meeting in about an hour.
Yeah. Is it 6:00 PM or 5:00?
4:30 is a photo, and 5 is dinner, and 6 is a meeting.
4:30?
Yes, they said. That's what my memo said.
The meeting starts at 6.
Yeah, meetings are 6. Dinner at 5.
That's my understanding.
There's no 4:30, is there? Because I gotta go back to Quincy. I have nothing else.
I'll move that we adjourn at 3:25.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.